The Board of Supervisors, the County of Del Norte and the governing body of all their special assessments and taxing districts for which said board so acts is now meeting a regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at that assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. And we will start off with Supervisor Gitlin leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you Chair Sullivan. Would everybody please put your right hands over your heart? Ready? Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands united under our individual right to protect and justice for all.
Okay, are there any new employees to be introduced? None? Okay. Counsel, any reportable actions from closed session?
No reportable actions today.
Okay. Okay, at this point are there any deletions, corrections, or additions from board members to the agenda at this time? In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, Chair Sullivan, I'd like to delete and actually remove for discussion items five and fourteen.
Okay, well, we won't delete it, but we'll definitely pull item five and fourteen for discussion. And then item eighteen in the agenda is a duplicate item. It was voted on on April 23rd, so we are going to remove that that's already been voted on. And I think that is... Any other corrections or additions? Okay. At this point, we are now going to hear brief reports and announcements for board members related to programs, projects, travels, and committees. We are going to start with Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you Chair Sullivan. This was an auspicious two-week period for Del Norte County and its fight against blight. Last Thursday, the partners of our Take a Bite Out of Blight program inaugurated its first effort and successfully removed wood trash debris from a home on McNamara Street. Many thanks and a deep appreciation to the volunteers from our Daily Bread ministries. Mike and Daphne over there. Thank you to Tim Hoon from Rural Human Services, Tommy Sparrow from Recology for his donation of a dumpster. And also to Walmart Crescent City and store manager Nick Cunella for financial contribution to start our first program. This first program, this first home will be the first of many to be cleaned up. We'll continue our efforts to help the disabled and elderly homeowners who have been issued warnings to clean up their properties but are unable to do so because of age or disability or inability to pay. Wanted to deliver an update on the county-owned property just east of Walmart that has been severely blighted. We have finally reached what appears to be the end of this bureaucracy trail. And we now have a green light to clean up the mess and secure the property from future human assault. We'll be moving forward on cleaning up the trash and waste, both human and inorganic. It's going to be a challenge. We've got some money issues, but I think we're going to do it. We're going to get these funds necessary. And since we're almost at year-end, we want to do it expeditiously. We'll have some volunteer efforts in that who hopefully will rescue the day. After the Board of Supervisors meeting April 23rd, I attended our monthly Solid Waste Authority meeting. And I'm nominated at-large member Mary Wilson to the authority, and the authority similarly approved her. Mary has also been confirmed by the city council and awaits final confirmation today at our Board of Supervisor meeting. Other activities since our last meeting, Wednesday, April 24th, the Sea Cruise Car Show and Visitors Bureau. I'm working on a surprise guest to appear at the Sea Cruise Car Show, which will be October 10th and 11th. It's a local person who's achieved quite a high level of fame in his field. And I'll titillate you that with that later, more on that at a later date. Also, attended the monthly Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention Meeting where scholarships were discussed. Thursday, April 25th, attended the UROC Tribal Groundbreaking Project. Very special recognition to Planning Director Peggy O'Neil and her team. Tanya Sangray, Executive Director of UROC Economic Development, Assistant Director Terry Colton, and Gaming Commissioner Raymond Bacon. Friday, April 26th, met with Chamber of Commerce and will welcome a group of French travel agents who will be visiting Del Norte County next week. Tuesday, April 30th, we had our revolving loan committee meeting, nothing to report on that. Wednesday, May 2nd, attended the Area One Agency on Aging and welcomed two new commission members, both from Del Norte County. Thursday, May 2nd, Redwood Coast Travel Authority accepted an audit and reviewed the 2013-2014 budget. Also attended the monthly meeting of Republican Women Federated and met and welcomed new Rural Human Services CEO Mike Costigan. Wednesday, May 8th, met with the Intergovernment Relations Committee Quarterly Meeting at the wastewater treatment plant in the city over there at the Battery Point. Representatives from the city schools, Rural Human Services, Del Norte County, met to discuss ongoing activity. Nothing to report there. Last Thursday, Future Facilities Group met and I learned the Department of Health and Human Services will be undergoing a major $300,000 overhaul, which will precipitate relocating some of its services to the fairgrounds for a short period of time in September. Approximately $260,000 of these renovations will be made by the landlord. And the near $40,000 Department of Health and Human Services contribution will be addressed later here at this meeting. At the Future Facilities meeting, I contacted Director Blatnick after I learned that an employee of Health and Human Services was unexpectedly attacked by an upset client who hurdled the counter at the North Crest facility. I've asked for a report from Director Blatnick on what measures have been or will be taken to ensure employee safety at all mental health facilities in the hope that this report will be forthcoming to the Board of Supervisors. Finally, I listened to an excellent presentation from Del Norte County Emergency Services Director Cindy Henderson in advising our citizens to be prepared for the imminent catastrophe by storing up on suitable amounts of water, propane, and food. I also learned of the event, the Cascadia Earthquake, which is due within the next 100 years or so. And the good advice is it's better to be prepared for this imminent disaster. On that note, back to you Chair Sullivan.
Thank you Supervisor Hemmingson.
Thank you. Well, I started off since the last board meeting, I went to a NORTEC meeting, which is the Northern Rural Training and Employment Consortium. We roughly have a budget of about $16 million. And we've applied for another $2.25 million, which will give us roughly a $19 million budget this year. And the service provider in Del Norte County is Rural Human Services. But while at the meeting, I found it interesting, I sat next to the Superintendent of Schools of Tahama County. And again, this third grade, third or fourth grade reading proficiency subject came up again. And it was very interesting getting to talk to him because he says up until the third grade, you learn to read. And from then on, you read to learn. So if you're not proficient in reading by the third grade, your chances of success are very small. And not only that, but now the Department of Corrections, because of the studies that they've done within their facilities, they are able to predict the number of beds that they're going to need in the future because of this third grade proficiency statistic. So it's very interesting that there seems to be a solution to a whole bunch of problems. And hopefully, we certainly can address those in our community. Moving along, had a Supervisor Sullivan and I were requested to take a tour of the Sheevy Rock Quarry, which was interesting. I hadn't been up there in years. I've flown over it several times. But interesting tour. No more than that. Had a two-by-two with Redwood National and State Parks. Supervisor Finnegan sat in on that for Supervisor Sullivan. We met the new Superintendent of the Redwood National Park, Steve Prokop, who is coming here from Hawaii. Seems like a real interesting guy and wants to be very proactive in access and the kind of things that we like to see in Del Norte County, so that's great. And I would like to mention that Jeff Baumke, who by the new Superintendent said was instrumental in keeping our visitor center open up in Jed Smith. So I gave him kudos for working on that very hard. He also brought up the OHV issue and was going to have the OHV Division get in contact with myself. So I'm waiting to hear about that. Also had with Supervisor Sullivan, had a city-county two-by-two where we set up issues that will be on our city-county joint meeting coming up this month? Later? The 21st? Yeah. Mostly having to do with city-county partnerships, trying to keep those solvent and going. Also had an invitation to go up to the Big Rock Water District. I'm on the North Coast Integrated Regional Water Management Plan that authorized the payment of some $875,000 for a project up there replacing their water tank. So we were asked to go up there. Supervisor Sullivan and I took a tour of their facility, the water tank replacement. Also Monica from KIEM Channel 3 was there and interviewed us all, but just the pretty faces were put on TV. Supervisor Sullivan and Craig Bradford were on TV, which is a good thing. I'm not complaining at all. At a Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, we had a hard time getting a quorum. Supervisor Sullivan was able to sit in for a few minutes where we were able to accept the appraisals of the Pacific Shore lots at $5,000 each. No more, we couldn't really take on any more business. He had another meeting to go to and we were short of a quorum, so we were not able to reconvene after a closed session. Supervisor Finnegan and I had a two-by-two meeting with the UROC Tribe in Klamath, having to do with their Klamath Boulevard project. They're wanting to do some changes and what they're saying are enhancements to Klamath Boulevard. And some things they want to do with Klamath Circle Road. And we talked about mitigation for their new hotel casino project. I got several calls on the fire that happened up in Jed Smith. People wanted to know why the helicopter was hauling water from Lake Earl. And that was the issue. There was a couple of redwoods, I guess, that got some lightning strikes. And they were burning kind of from the inside out. So I don't know whether they ended up having to cut those trees down or not, but they did haul water for most of the day. Had a Local Transportation Commission meeting. We received a lot of public comment on the STAA Access Project 199 and 197. Most of the public comment was in opposition. Most of those were representatives of the Friends of Del Norte. Last night had a, or yesterday afternoon, had a Local Area Formation Commission meeting. We approved our budget and we're moving along. And that was it for me.
All right, thank you Supervisor McClure.
Thank you. I, the Senior Center met and we were extremely concerned about the CDBG money not being released. And thanks to the good work of our administrative staff, that has now been taken care of. Because there are substantial cuts in the service delivery with some of the Meals Program in relationship to Area 1 on Aging through this equestration. So, but with the CDBG money, we feel that we're going to be whole and be able to pull and offer the same level of service that has been offered previous years at the Senior Center, which is a good to hear. Our CTA met and we approved the audit. And it was an audit that you very seldom see where there were no recommendations. So that was very good. The Revolving Loan Committee met and we had several issues in relationship to some loans that are in the rears. And Janine is taking care of that. EMS, we had our monthly meeting, approved our yearly budget. And as you can see on the agenda, took a position for the Pediatric Trauma Care to continue. We, I've had a couple of questions, and I just want to bring this to the attention of the board, that apparently historically people have been able to do their dog training for duck hunting out at Lake Earl in that area. And they're now being told that they can't do that, so we have to take care of that. The woman wasn't sure if it was State Parks telling them that or Fish and Game, but we need to follow up to make sure that that historic activity in our community could continue. I've also had several calls about charter and our need as a community to press that charter needs to improve its service. I attended the Trades Union Celebration Luncheon last Saturday where there were a couple hundred people in attendance of just working-class citizens in our community, and that was very nice. At the coast, I was, we had a Coastal Commission meeting in Marin. And at that meeting, the, our harbor had an application in to do a eel grass mitigation. And it was an interesting concept because normally the eel grass mitigation is very, very sensitive. And there's a lot of work to be done. And our staff here at the harbor came up with a plan of actually enhancing an eel grass bed by putting some of the dredge spoils into the bed and shallowing the water. And the biologists at the Coastal Commission were very excited because it could be a statewide solution to mitigating eel grass. So that, we were leading the way with that. I have had several phone calls about the Sutter Coast Study Plan. And we'll take that up later in the agenda. And I had the benefit of attending two winning Giants games, so I'm a happy camper.
Thank you Supervisor Finnegan.
Thank you. I too had a few meetings. And aside from feeling phone calls like we all do, and I think you get a little flavor of what we do, from speeding cars in the birch tract on Mayer Avenue to dogs barking, to airport issues, to vets issues. That's just the normal stuff that we always do. Had a few meetings, some of them you heard about Supervisor Hemmingson. Also attended the UROC groundbreaking down in Klamath. Talked to them about, by talking to them, I meant with Tom O'Rourke, who's the chairman of their council, as well as some other council members, what their plans are down there. It's just not for the casino and for their three-story hotel, but also for a visitor's center and also for a justice center down there. So it's going to be interesting. They're basically redefining the township of Klamath. We'll see how that transpires. Had a two-by-two with parks, as was mentioned by Supervisor Hemmingson, met the new superintendent. Very encouraged by his attitude. We've seen park superintendents come and go. And this one seems to be very open and wants to explore the possibilities for greater access to the parks and working with the state parks as well as Atalua Dunes and reinvestigating the off-highway vehicle use. Met with, after that, went and met with the Chief Justice, Conti, and I'm going to butcher her name, I apologize, Justice Saraiui, who was the Chief Justice Supreme Court of the State of California. We met in her office in San Francisco down at the Administrative Office of the Courts. And we talked about, and we do this every year, how counties interact with courts, especially since the court transferred from county to the courts and state. And basically, making sure that the relationship is going good, what the needs are, what we see with some issues that are definitely within the jurisdiction of the bench and not within the supervisors. But you know, it's our constituency also. But more importantly, she has an initiative this year that dealt with or is dealing with truancy. And noting that children that are truant that are not in school soon come into the system. So they know that. They have statistics. So this is something she wants to work on. And I mentioned to her that I also at CSAC had the initiative of being the year of the child and how we can work together. So we agreed, she's going to sit me on a panel with some other judges, to how do we work together as counties and with school districts to address this truancy issue that is definitely a litmus test for where you're going to see the problems later on. If the children aren't in school and they aren't learning, then they're going to be in the court systems later on. So it was really a good partnership there and look forward to continuing that. Then went to Sacramento, met with, was a follow-up to a meeting we had the week prior regarding the Department of Corrections and Health Department there. But the first meeting that we had was with the governor himself regarding the Affordable Care Act, the implementation. I don't know how successful it was, but it planted the seeds. And by saying I don't know how successful it was, as the governor's May revise is due out this morning. And he had scored a couple of $2.5 billion that he identified as savings by implementation of the Affordable Care Act and dealing, the counties dealing with indigent care, really it's only 46% of what we deal with. But thinking that that's a savings coming from the federal government, so he wants to take that money. And we were making the plea that no, this is the safety net. That some people are not going to get off indigent care. They're not going to go on to Medi-Cal come January 1st, 2014, and we really do need the money. Having said that, we agreed to find a way to score a formula so we could talk about how we could pass through some savings if they actually happen. So what you have is you have the CMSP counties, you have the hospital counties, you have issues like wanting to pass down childcare if we don't give them the money. So we're in negotiations with the governor, and this was the first shot, to talk about how we can pass through some of the savings, if in fact there are savings, and still return governance down to the local level with constitutional guarantees that the funding won't be stripped. And allow counties to do what we do best, and that's identify what that safety net, especially that health safety net, is in our county. So it was a good positive step. Again, we'll find out just what happened here in a couple hours probably. Stuck around and then had another meeting with the governor with, only they kicked staff out of the room and it was just the head of probation in the state, the head of the DA's in the state, and the head of the Chiefs of Police in the state, the governor, myself, talking about the three-panel judge that had mandated to the governor to develop a plan, how he was going to reduce his prison population to 137.5% capacity, which the judge has scored at 9,000 more people had had to come out. Discounting the fact that the governor has already implemented a plan that took 23,000 people out of the prison system. Discounting the fact of the AB 109 and the Prop 30 that we transitioned the low-level, the non-non-nons back to counties. And all the good work that really is being done. And, but, he had to produce a plan so he wouldn't be held in contempt of court or risk that the federal government would come in and take over the system, the state prison system. And that had to be done by May 2nd. So we met with him on the 1st and implored upon, told him that there is this partnership between the, especially between CSAC, the counties, and the governor, that really is a marriage that we supported him in AB 109, which is the bringing the non-non-nons back to the communities, to the counties. Prop 30, the constitutional guarantees, realignment, all that. And that if he thought that the way to solve the problem was to reduce this prison population by moving more prisoners to the county or even by early outs and putting them on parole, this was going to severely impact county jails. It was going to impact our budgets and we would term it as a breach in the relationship. So he held true to his word. He said that it was a capacity issue, that he was not going to do early releases, that he was going to develop private prisons, contract with them, contract out of state, open up the fire camps, open up new prisons that are being built like in Stockton, and thought that, it probably was down to about 900, not 9,000 prisoners that he was going to be overloaded with, and continued to argue with the court. So I think a major victory for counties in that he did not dump his problem onto counties, but continued to work with us. So that was good. Came back, had a UROC two-by-two meeting, supposed to be on off-reservation impacts to the new casino. And it was a good sharing of ideas. I'm not so sure how we share, but I don't know who's listening, so these will continue. Participated in the Casa Golf Tournament. Court-appointed special advocates, I think they raised $11,000. Great turnout, a lot of fun. Typically always have my CSAC officer calls on Mondays where we set agendas and then had a meeting with future, with CSAC regarding the future conferences. So all in all, a very productive couple of weeks.
Thank you. It's been a really busy few weeks also on my side. As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, I sat in on the Border Coast Airport Authority. Just I happened to be in the building and they needed an alternate to make a quorum, so we were able to get a couple things business-wise done. I did make it to the Casa tournament. Went for the silent auction, but wasn't able to do it. My son started, Jane Romiano's, a Del Norte Junior Tennis Program, which is phenomenal. Her, not tryouts, I should say, the classes or the practices and the stuff start May 15th. So if you've got a kid interested in it, it was a great, great experience. And it just happened to be the hottest day of the year so far too. So combination of the, and Jane, I know you're going to guarantee it's going to be that hot for the rest of it, right? Yeah. The Casa tournament was booked. I did see the number of cars in there and that's always a great project. Carolyn Russ at the Casa Board is very active in that. I attended a Solid Waste Authority Board meeting, as Supervisor Gitlin mentioned. We selected Mary Wilson as the member-at-large. Took a tour with Supervisor Hemmingson of the Sheevy Rock Quarry out in Gasky. Had a meeting with the Humboldt Area Foundation's Executive Director Patrick Cleary and along with Wild Rivers Executive Director Gina Satola, which was pretty informational on that. As Supervisor Hemmingson mentioned, we went out to take a tour of the tank replacement in the Big Rock Water District. Supervisor Hemmingson was instrumental in getting the matching funds to come to get that project off the ground and going. And I wanted, you know, I met with, it was Monica from News Channel 3, Craig Bradford is one of the directors, Cliff Shepherd as well, and Mike Wiley is their main maintenance guy. And it was good to see it, plus it turned out to be a phenomenal day in Hauchi, so it was a good day to take the tour of it. It's a great project though. It's badly needed and it's good to see that infrastructure that will fix the project for a long time to come. Had a two-by-two meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson and city to set our joint city-county meeting that is going to be on May 21st. And it will be here at the board chambers for those that are able to attend. Had a, so it was supposed to be in Alabama last week for our Money Manager Conference, but we're having more issues with flight schedules. Flight was canceled the morning, rescheduled at quarter to 3:00. That got delayed out. By the time it was all said and done, I would have missed half the conference, so I didn't go. Which is actually pretty disappointing on the fact it's just a reoccurring situation. We've talked about that at some point we need to make a meeting with SkyWest to say what needs to be done about the flight schedule because it's not really the airport here that is messing up your flights, it's in San Francisco. And some is on SkyWest as well. We want to continue to have people to use that. That helps the airport. That's a major component to our economic development. It's one of the major five infrastructure projects in the county. We need to improve that and not take away from it. Attended Republican Central Committee meeting, was unable to make the building healthy communities meeting and still waiting to see what the feedback was from the community on that. Attended the Local Transportation Commission meeting where we had commentary from mostly the Friends of Del Norte regarding Highway 199, 197 project, which continues to go forward. It's a safety project and also regarding STAA access. Attended a chamber mixer at All Creatures Animal Hospital. Very well done. They have a great program there. It was a pretty big attendance too at that. And finally, one of the nicer things I got to do, I got to attend, it's the first time I've attended it, but if any of you have not gone to it, it's definitely worthwhile. It's a county-wide band concert that they put on. And just a phenomenon. It packed the big building at the fairgrounds. Which is, getting that many kids in one room as well as some parents is quite a scene by itself. But I want to congratulate Marshall Jones and Amy Ross and Mr. Sedgwick. And I forgot the music teacher's name at Mary Peacock, which I should know because my son goes there. But I'll bring it up because they've got another concert this week on Thursday. They all, all four of them put a great job in. The kids did a great job performing. And they were all dressed up in black and white and it was pretty cool to watch. So got some really talented young kids in the county. So with that, I am going to go to a brief report from our county administrative officer.
Well, this is the time-
Well, this is the time for our budget process, so the, a lot of our time has been spent meeting with individual departments regarding the requested budgets. Obviously, when you get budget requests, you will have some things in there that may or may not make it to the recommended budget, but we'll be meeting with each individual department and coming up with a recommendation for the board. At the end of May, you'll hear a report at the next meeting that's a little more specific than what you'll hear today. I think we will have all of the meetings completed by the end of this week and start working on that report for the end of, well, end of June. We've been continuing to work on requests for proposals and a contract for the testing for hazardous materials at the 705th Street property, in anticipation of trying to budget for that, for its dismantling sometime this next fiscal year if possible. That one has been ongoing now for some time. We had difficulty getting a consultant contractor to come to Del Norte County, we don't have any of them licensed in Del Norte County, and were able to then solicit, after we went out to bid, received nobody at the walkthrough. So we do have one now, and we'll be going into contract shortly. Trying to wrap up the Point St. George environmental document and get on to Phase 2, we will be meeting with State Parks to go over a couple of last-minute issues that they have regarding the environmental document, and essentially the mitigated neck deck is the final step in Phase 1 before we then look at funding for the actual implementation and construction of the trail in the future. That money is not secure at this time, and Coastal Conservancy will be one of the primary partners in that. And have been working on miscellaneous issues, negotiations, and actions that the board has asked us to undertake.
All right. Thank you.
Chair Sullivan, if I could, Jay, a few months back, I think I brought up, and I think the board concurred with direction, in the budget process, that there needed to be a checklist added on how issues affect the children negatively or positively. And I know in the one issue that got pulled that had to do with the hosting ordinance would have been a perfect one to have it in there, I still don't see it in there. What's going on?
I met with the board, or the individual department heads, have asked them to start to consider that, have those on each one of the board reports, and it should be implemented by the next meeting. We have a, an outline, we have the contra Costa information, so that they have a better understanding of what has been requested of them, and yes, that would have been a prime example.
So it'll be part of that check?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be part of the standardized reports that are submitted. So you'll see the discussion justification, financial discussion, as well as the impact on children.
Good. Excellent, because the timing's perfect with budgets coming out.
Yeah, that would have been a perfect one to have on, but we're trying to get that implemented.
All right. Thank you. And by the way, it's Mrs. Clensey is the music teacher at Mary Peacock, so I have to forgive me on forgetting that for a second, so.
Chair Sullivan? I couldn't help but notice we have a standing-room-only audience here, which is refreshing and beautiful to see. We have some empty seats here, and I, I want to direct, I don't want anyone uncomfortable here. So there are four seats over here, there's I think one more there.
Feel free to, anytime.
Please feel free to be seated, I know you're here, and we want you here, but we want you comfortable. So please feel free to take an open seat.
Okay, at this point, we are going to go on to public comment. And let me, so public, members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you're addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less, and identify yourself into the microphone. Director Blatnik, I, we had talked earlier about, had a brief update on the public health officer.
Is the mic on?
Is this working?
Yeah, there you go.
We will have Dr. Ray Walt starting as our new public health officer on June 10th.
Okay. Thank you for the update. Any other pub comment? Yes?
I come here to bring to your attention that over 400 letters of concern for the unsafe design of Highway 199 was submitted in the environmental review process. That's an unprecedented number for this county, and, and the lack of demonstrated economic need within the EIR. As responsible citizens groups have submitted detailed, independent safety review for the Highway 199, 197 project, and what is, the result of that is an investigation of only three words in an entire EIR document, from this wall to that wall, only three words were used to inform the citizens about whether or not this is safety and reviewing this. They said, "We're taking design exemptions." These are safety exemptions. So the citizens wanted to know how unsafe this design was, and in more detail than just three words. And so a review was done, and it shows that Caltrans is just allowing for a one-foot clearance for margin, a one-foot margin of error. And it, design safety rules say that you're supposed to have four times as much for STA A trucks on Highway 199. And then the other issue that was of so, so much importance for everybody on 197 and between Hayuchi and Gasky is that there weren't no, between Hayuchi and Gasky, there was no safety improvements, and that Caltrans claimed that there wasn't going to be an increase in traffic. How could they determine that? It's so unfair to this community for them to just interview the local truck users when we have I-5 sitting there that has all of that traffic ready to come our way, and there is no assessment. And so another independent review by citizens brought forth by Marafini, a planning, a planning expert of 35 years' experience, pointed out that you cannot determine induced traffic from I-5 with just local interviews of truck drivers. It doesn't make any sense. So we have invited...
Ms. Cooper, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
So it is, and EIR is supposed to be an opening-up process, where no community should say yes to a plan until all the facts are in. And so we ask that Caltrans go back and do their job of due diligence to, to address these issues, and rescind support until there is a thorough review.
Ms. Cooper, you need to wrap it up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public con, uh, comment?
Good morning. Good morning, Honorable Board of Supervisors. I'd like to express that I have tremendous respect for each and every one of you.
Ms., you need to identify yourself.
I'm Linda Sutter, 5th District. I appreciate the time and effort that you exert working to ensure our county receives the necessary funds that support the continuous development of this county. And I would like to say that I've been a citizen of this county for 20 years, but I did take a three-year vacation, and did extensive travel across the country of Spain, and had the opportunity to utilize their railway system. And when I came back to the United States, I, this past year, I went to utilize our country's railway system. And so what I'd like to see from my representatives here is maybe taking an opportunity to try to get the railway system that once was available from Eureka to the San Francisco area back on track, and maybe even extending it up to here. And I know that's a big request and lots of money, but it would, it would probably appease to the environmentalist, it would open up jobs, and, and it would be a great way for people to get out of the city without the stress of driving to the Del Norte County and North Coast. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm Lee Roy Bieber, ex-schoolteacher, lived here since '61. And would you re, please repeat Gary's motion?
It's not a motion, there's, Dr. Ray Walt has, is the new public health officer, and I think it's...
Boy, the word must have got out that I was going to be here. Because it was, my issue was, a few weeks ago, I read in the paper that you were spending $38,000 for a doctor that didn't even live here, 700 miles away. Now somebody should have caught that before it came up, pulled on the agenda. We were wasting money. And then last meeting, didn't you approve somebody to do it for free?
No, that was an assistant position as a, that was an assistant position as a backup.
Assistant?
Yeah.
To somebody that isn't here? Right? Okay. Anyway, they were paying $3,000 a month to somebody that lives 700 miles away, has his house up for sale, and nobody caught on that there's, there's a payoff here someplace or something? And he gets a cellphone. How many other perks did he get? Blatnik?
Well, Mr. Bieber, you need to address the board. If you want to have a dialogue with...
Okay, does he get mileage?
If, I, like I said, this isn't a dialogue, so you've got three minutes.
No dialogue, so there's no answers to questions?
You can, you can ask questions after the meeting?
Okay, I wonder how many perks there were. I mean, the guy was making $38,000, and I went and got a job description of the job, and his, the duties here, there's 11 of them, and at least nine of them, he couldn't perform 700 miles away. And nobody caught that? I mean, it says he has to participate. I've been to a lot of the discussions about the hospital problem. I've never seen Dr. Martinelli, I've never seen anybody from the health department there. Now, isn't this part of their job? And they're not doing it and get away with it? Somebody better check. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this got through on your consent agenda, because you can throw anything in there, and it all passes, and nobody knows the difference. Why can't we have like a $1,000 limit? If it's over $1,000, you've got to vote. So us taxpayers know when you're up for reelection, how you voted. We don't know how you feel, you just pass an agenda, consent agenda. And there's things, and then you brag about voting 5-0 for four, two years or something. I don't think that's anything to be proud of. You got whitewashed for that many long, you all agreed on everything. That's impossible. Okay. And then another thing, you ask your county employees to take furlough days, money out of their pocket so that you could send $38,000, 700 miles away to...
Mr. Bieber, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
I will wrap it up.
Okay.
A dollar turns over approximately seven times. What did that do to their economy down there? And cheat us out in Del Norte County? You multiply seven times three, $21,000? Yeah.
Okay.
Let's see if I got anything else real quick, but, oh, I do have one thing. I know I can't ask you questions, I only get three minutes, but I'd really appreciate if each one of you could justify how you voted to let this happen after I get set down. Thank you very much.
Any other public comment?
One other thing.
You're, you're four minutes into your three-minute time spot, so if you, if, if Mrs. Bieber would like to get up and ask a question, that, there's three minutes for anyone in the public.
I don't know what questions to ask.
Any, any other public, any, any other, excuse me, we have a meeting, we're transacting here. Any other public comment? Okay, we are going to close public comment at this point, and we will take up the consent agenda. Minus number five and 14 have been pulled from the consent agenda. And I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda, minus four, five and 14.
Moved to approve.
It's been moved?
Second.
Been moved in second? Any public comment on items on the consent agenda, minus number five and 14? Yes?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. My name is Isaac Kenny from the UROC Tribe Transportation Department. I wanted to come here today and show support for Agenda Item 10, the, you know, get your staff to work on getting after bridge funds for Hopow and Salt Creek Bridge. So those two bridges in Klamath do provide access to pretty important roads for our community in Requa as well as our community in Klamath, accessing the new Klamath Town site, which we have been working with you all on plans for. So I just want to come in and say this is a great way, your staff is being proactive, and we appreciate and commend their efforts, so appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on items on the consent agenda? Okay, at this point, I will bring it back to the board, any other comments?
Yeah, very briefly, I appreciate the UROC Tribe weighing in on the bridges in Klamath. There's also Gilbert Creek Bridge is another one, so thank you for that. And then on number three, and I guess four is tied into it, two regarding the Veteran's Service Office and the new program of, and donations that accompany it for the vegetable gardens. They're going to be used for some of the post-traumatic stress disorder vets, and integrating them back into the community and helping them with therapy there. That is a great project, and be commended.
Excellent. Okay.
I just have one comment on the pictures that we were provided for the bridges. Not very good, at the best. It would certainly be nice to have a little better quality of picture that we could get, get sent to us for where these bridges are. Just a comment.
Okay. All right, Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingsen?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
I'm going to have to back up a minute, because I made the motion, and I need to abstain on number 11.
Okay, so we need to re...
So it would be appropriate for somebody else to make the motion.
Supervisor McClure will have the motion, you second McClure's?
I second.
Okay.
So yes, abstaining on 11.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes, minus number six and 11, I have a conflict of interest, I can't vote on those two. Okay. At this point, we are going to, we have a couple proclamations in the consent agenda, and Item 2, adopt proclamation proclaiming May as Older Americans Month as requested by Area 1 on Aging, and Supervisor Gitlin, give me that to read.
This wouldn't be have anything to do with the fact that I am an older American, would it, Chair Sullivan? Well, apparently I'm one of 6,000 citizens aged 60 and older here in Del Norte County, that's the first whereas. The older adults in Del Norte County are the roots from which our community grows, who bestow gifts of wisdom and insight upon younger generations and strengthen the bonds between neighbors to create a better place to live, and whereas our society can be enhanced by older adults aging peacefully in their communities, and whereas the older adults in Del Norte County should be commended for their role in creating and bolstering the fiber of our community and nation, and whereas our community can provide the recognition and respect of enriching the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain in their communities as active and engaged citizens. Number two, providing services, technologies, and support systems that allow seniors to foster and maintain connections within the community. And number three, emphasizing the value of elders by publicly recognizing their contributions to the diversity, strength, and unity of our community. Now therefore, we of Del Norte County do hereby proclaim May 2013 to be Older Americans Month. We urge every citizen to take time this month to honor our older adults and the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of our older Americans and their involvement in our lives can help us to achieve stronger and more meaningful connections with each other and enrich our community's quality of life. It's passed this 14th day of May 2013. Now Supervisor Chair, is there someone to receive this proclamation?
Area 1. Excellent.
Whether you guys realize it or not. Can I thank the board for this? We do do a lot of good, I think.
Tom, can, can you talk into the mic on that?
Area 1 Agency does do a lot of good in the community. We're part of Humboldt County, as you know. We're about 18 to 19 percent... We're about 18% to 19% of their budget, which isn't very much sometimes. Martha knows about the program, our meal program, which we're not doing bad, but we're not doing as well as we should.
What's that?
We're gonna make it.
Oh, that's true, we are gonna make it. We make it regardless. But I thank you for passing this, and I appreciate your time, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
The other proclamation we had was Item 12, approve and adopt a proclamation declaring May 2013 as Mental Health Month as requested by Director of Health and Human Services. Supervisor Hemmingsen, you have the proclamation.
Yeah, it's a proclamation of Mental Health Month, May 2013. Whereas mental health is essential to the overall health of Del Norte County, resulting in productive activities, fulfilling relationships, and the ability to adapt and to change and cope with adversity. And whereas one in four American adults-
Yeah, one in five on this one. I guess.
Are affected by mental illness.
Why about a five?
Yeah. And our local mental health board and others emphasize the importance of promoting mental health and the early identification of mental illness. And whereas mental health problems do not discriminate, they affect people regardless of race, creed, age, lifestyle, or economic status. And mental health recovery is possible with proper treatment and support empowering mental health consumers to lead full and productive lives. And whereas as many as eight million Americans who have serious mental health illness do not receive adequate treatment each year, and people who have untreated mental health issues use more general health services than those who receive mental health services when they need them. And whereas the County of Del Norte has made a commitment to the community-based systems of mental health care in which all residents can receive high-quality and consumer-centered services, and takes pride in its history of upholding the dignity and civil rights of all of its people, including those coping with mental illness. And whereas mental illness should not be shrouded in stigma and discrimination, causing those who are affected to not seek care, the County of Del Norte observes Mental Health Month every May to raise awareness and understanding of mental health. And whereas we commend the Department of Health and Human Services, Mental Health Branch, our local mental health board, and all the community partner organizations, whether private, faith-based, or governmental, and individuals and family members for those for their outstanding work improving the quality of their- of life for mentally disabled individuals in our community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Del Norte that May 2013 is hereby proclaimed as Mental Health Month throughout Del Norte County, and calls upon its citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools, to recommit our community to increase awareness and understanding of mental health illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness. Passed and adopted this 14th day of May 2013.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Wilma Wright, and I am a consumer. And on behalf of the rest of the consumers of Del Norte and staff, we'd like to hand out these green ribbons for Mental Health Month, and thank you very kindly for the proposition.
And I'd like to thank you that you guys didn't take the funds for the center and put them in the general fund, or we would have had services cut if they were put in the general fund. So I want you to thank you for leaving our funds alone.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. Thanks. All right. At this item, we're- at this time, we are going to go on to timed items. We had an item that was timed at 10:45. Conduct a public hearing to discuss the proposed use of $70,000 in Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Program Income for the rehabilitation of Redwood Cove Senior Apartments, and approve and adopt Resolution 2013-018 entitled the Resolution of Del Norte County Board of Supervisors authorizing the reuse of Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Program Income contingent on the granting of the State Department of Housing and Community Development waiver. How does it now feel?
Chair Sullivan?
Yes.
Because I sit on the senior board, and we don't really oversee Redwood Cove, but our director is also employed with Redwood Cove, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay. Mr. Carnegie?
Chair Sullivan? I think this is pretty well explained in the board report, but we did- the county did include the repair of some major damage at the Redwood Cove Senior Apartments in our 2012 Community Development Block Grant application. Unfortunately, that application was unfunded, and the Redwood Cove Apartments have come back and requested- they originally requested $80,000 to do- the project is downsized tremendously, but they requested $80,000. This was taken to the revolving loan committee, and the committee, because of the finances and the revolving loan accounts at this time, have recommended $70,000 be applied to this project. This public hearing then is to receive public comment on this proposed shift of funding from revolving activities to a non-revolving activity, but an activity that is- meets all of the requirements of the Community Development Block Grant funding. Okay? Any question?
Okay. So at this point, we'll now open the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please step to the clerk's desk and use the sheet provided to sign your name and address for the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please identify yourself, use the microphone so that your comments may be heard. If we could just show our hands how many people are gonna be speaking on this. Just, Charlene, are you- you're pretty much it? Okay.
Can you say it louder?
Oh, I'm sorry, if you're planning on speaking on this item, okay, it's okay. Okay.
My name is Charlene Maisy, and I am the Executive Director for the Senior Center and for Redwood Cove Community Center, which owns the Redwood Cove Apartments. And I just wanted to thank you all for considering our request. This is for repairing some pretty severe damage to the elevator tower portion of the apartment buildings. It's been a problem for at least as long as I've been there, for the last two-plus years, and we just haven't been able to get enough funding in our replacement reserve to do the entire project ourselves. So we really appreciate your- considering our request, and I'm willing to answer any questions you have on the project.
Any questions to supervisors? Yeah, Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, we went over this in the future facilities discussion with Mr. Carnegie, and I'd just like to get an idea of when you plan to start the project, how long it- will the elevator still be operating? I'm told they will be when it will be completed.
Yes, the elevator will still be able to operate. There's no damage to the actual structure of the elevator itself, it's just the outside facade that's going away, and some support structures for the second and third floor of the building. We can- we've got an engineer on board. We did a bid process and contracted with SHN Engineering, and he is in the process of putting a bid package together. As soon as we get an okay from this board and from HCD, ultimately, to use the funding, I can ask him to finish that up, and he's anticipating, I believe, the beginning of June to release the RFP for the construction. So we're hoping to have this done by fall. We don't want to go through another winter with it the way it is.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comments? Okay, seeing no other public comments at this point, well, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I move for approval.
Second. It's been moved and second. Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna go on to the other timed item, or one of the-
Yes, the other.
Sorry. Yes, Dan. We're going on to Item 23, introduce and waive full reading of an ordinance adding Chapter 7.56 entitled Social Host Ordinance to the Del Norte County Code as requested by Director of Health and Human Services.
Thank you again. This has been a project that actually came from a joint city-county meeting about six months ago, and since then, we have worked with a large group of people, both from the city, the county, as well as some wonderful youth. And today, we have the actual ordinance before you, as well as a listing of the folks that have been involved in this process. Just to maybe let the folks know that are listening, that social hosting has a lot to do with underage drinking. And social hosting in this case means providing alcohol in your home to children that are under the legal age to drink. And these are individuals that are not members of your family. And so that's sort of the basic definition of social hosting. And there's a high correlation between youth that are introduced to alcohol in early age and later on having alcohol dependency problems. And there may be some youth that want to step forward and say something? They weren't as shy in the committee meeting, let me tell you. They proofread every single word, they went and worked with the attorneys, they were extremely helpful.
Excellent.
Hi, my name is Holly Merrifield, and I'm the president of the Del Norte Friday Night Live Youth Council, along with being on the California State Youth Council as well. And we've been working on the Social Host Ordinance for over about a year and a half now, and so it's been a long time in coming, and so it's really nice to have the support of the Board of Supervisors and the City Council, and for it to be being read right now. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, wow, that was moral support.
They didn't know they were going to happen.
Oh, okay, okay, all right, thank you.
And a year and a half in government time is not very long.
That's pretty quick, actually.
They spent a lot of time, you know, building up information, doing the research, so they could talk to us about what they wanted to see happen. And they've really put all the work behind this. If it weren't for them, we wouldn't be introducing this.
If you could kind of summarize what the- just for the general public, what are the repercussions once this thing is? And because today, we're waiving the full reading, we actually pass it at the next meeting.
Maybe our county council could help out in that regard.
Yeah.
Since she was involved in the actual writing of it. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Basically, this ordinance is to discourage adults in particular from hosting underage drinking in their home or on their property. So usually, the type of consequences would be some sort of infraction or misdemeanor, potential misdemeanor charges, which will have fines, of course. Misdemeanors may have probation or some sort of county jail time. And it escalates, you know? A first offense will be a lesser consequence than a second or a third offense. The fines will increase as time goes on, and as well as other consequences, and whether it will be an infraction or a misdemeanor. So your first offense is likely to either get a warning or infraction, and then another offense will get a higher consequence, and it'll continue on up. The hope is to obviously prevent and eliminate any underage drinking, and especially any adults who are encouraging the underage drinking or providing the alcohol to the minors who are drinking at any parties, or even allowing the alcohol to come with- if they know about it or aren't supervising appropriately. So that's basically the ordinance in a nutshell.
At this point, we're actually not taking action on it today, it's just the action will take place in the next meeting. Supervisor Gitlin?
I actually do have a question on it, County Council Stuart. Is there no state law that prevents or charges someone with felony by facilitating the buying of alcohol or the serving of alcohol to them? I thought there was existing state law on this.
There is a state law about supplying alcohol to underage drinkers. This one basically goes to the owners of the property where the underage drinking party is happening, is occurring. For example, either if the parents know that the alcohol is going on or not properly monitoring what is going on with an under- basically, what it's doing is encouraging monitoring of the parties by an adult, a responsible adult, who will step in and not allow alcohol. Based on my conversations with the sheriff, they don't get a lot of these calls. I think most of this type of party is actually happening on national park and state park property, and- but if they're happening in the county. But it's- the purpose is to discourage any parties where alcohol would be brought. There is a law that states that you cannot- there's a federal as well as a state law that basically states you cannot supply alcohol to underage drinkers.
And if you would, County Council Stuart, you- this is- this ordinance is divided into infraction and misdemeanor, but no felony for this?
That's correct.
So would you tell the group here the difference between if someone is charged with an infraction as compared with a misdemeanor? And what would be the threshold for each?
That's- the threshold's really gonna be dependent on the circumstances of the case, how often this has happened before, and it's gonna be at the discretion of the officer who responds, whether it would be an infraction which would go through the county process and an administrative hearing officer, versus a misdemeanor that is going to be a little bit higher level and will go through the state court process. A lot of it's gonna be the circumstances that come- that occur when the officer responds, how cooperative everybody is, how much information they're able to gather, whether everybody cooperates with the investigation, is honest with the officers. I mean, a lot of it's gonna be at the discretion of the officer who responds on whether or not an infraction or a misdemeanor is going to be cited. And there's a lot of factors, and realistically, the sheriff's office would probably be even better, because they're the ones that would deal with this on a daily basis. But it's gonna come down to the discretion of the officer, as well as how cooperative everybody is in the investigation.
Just to clarify, do we need to take any- we don't need to take any action on it?
Not today, this is just opening the public hearing and then doing a first reading, waiving the first reading, and then it will be-
Don't we need to have a motion to waive the first reading?
Yes, we do need that.
Okay. Any public comment on the Social Host Ordinance? Okay, so I'll bring it back to the board, not seeing any public comment.
Well, board comment, I know I brought up the checkoff regarding children as a budgetary process, but it also needs to be integrated into something like this. Anytime we adopt a policy, adopt a resolution, we need to consider how does it affect the children. And while it may be seen as an infraction or a misdemeanor against an adult, very proactively, it's supporting good, healthy children, so.
Okay. Was that a motion?
I move to waive the first reading.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Do we need to pull the vote on this one? Or we'll just- Supervisor McClure?
I do have a question in relationship to timing, because I know that this was born out of a joint city-county meeting. And can we- we can start the ball rolling today, but can we also at that joint city-county meeting, open and have the ordinance agreed upon by the two bodies?
I believe that's why the timing is such right now. We're gonna try to do it at that meeting.
Okay, yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it passes, and it will be on the joint city-county meeting. There was a 10:30 timed item, which is at the very back of the agenda. So at this moment, we're gonna adjourn as the Board of Supervisors, reconvene as the Board of Equalization, and conduct a public hearing for the change of assessment. APN parcel number 101-082-07, roll year 2011-2012, the applicant is Park. And so at this point, is- Tony, if you could swear in anyone that's gonna go ahead and speak, and we'll ask the assessor's office to speak first on the item. Are the- is the applicant here? No, I don't. I don't see anybody on that. So I- do we still need to go through this if they're not here to- okay. All right, we'll- we don't have these very pop up very often, so we'll go ahead and adjourn as the- We'll, we don't have these very pop up very often, so we'll go ahead and adjourn as the Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. That was quick. So we're going to go to legislative and budget matters, because we still have, we have about five minutes before the timed item, 1115. Oh, I'm sorry. I stand corrected. So item 14, which was polled, proven authorized the chair to sign agreement with Humboldt Moving and Storage effective May 14, 2013, to October 15, 2013, as $39,960, as requested by the Director of Health and Human Services. Gary.
We had presented this to future facilities last week, with Supervisor Gitlin there. And the basic plan is that, as you know, we signed a lease about six months ago to, for the next 15 years at our Northcrest facility. And part of that lease was for the landlord to provide essentially $300,000 worth of repairs, and such as a new heating ventilation system, new carpeting, painting, tiling, the kinds of things that just sort of wear and tear a affected building. There's no remodeling, we're not changing, moving walls around, or anything like that. So he, this is roughly a $300,000 project out of his pocket. The part that we need to do, and we want to do, because of the nature of the equipment and the privacy and confidentiality, is we want to move our equipment out of their way. So we have a plan to do that with the help, in this case, of Humboldt Moving and Storage. The local office here will actually come and do that work. They'll disassemble the cubicles, essentially, move them out of the way, move the other furnishings out of the way, file cabinets and desks and chairs, and then move them back, reassemble them, move it all back in. Part of that plan, we will need to move some of the staff actually out of the building. When they're being affected in the back part of Northcrest, we're going to move them over to the fairgrounds for about two weeks to a month, roughly, in there. We're not going to provide any services over there. That's where the staff will be working on their computers, doing that kind of work. If they need to actually see a client, they'll come over to the building. I shouldn't say they're not providing services, just not the face-to-face with a client will not go on at the fairgrounds. It'll go on at Northcrest. Then they'll go back to their, to the fairgrounds and finish their work. So we're trying to minimize, as much as humanly possible, the effect on services for our community. Our goal is to essentially not have any services affected. We'll see if we can reach 100%, but we're going to get as close to it as we possibly can. And so we have a good plan put in place. We've had information technology intimately involved in building maintenance, and the Barnes have engineers in the family who have worked with us very closely. They're sort of the project managers for this. Our assistant director has taken the role of being our project manager for the department. And I think we've got all the pieces put together, and hopefully, it'll all succeed, and by this fall, we'll be done.
Okay. Supervisor Gitlin, you pulled this for discussion?
Yes, I did, Chair Sullivan. Mr. Blattig, will you be paying rent on two locations at any time during this refurbishment period?
Well, we're going to have to pay rent for the fairgrounds for a couple of months, in order to relocate...
Will there be a proration, I guess is my question? When you're not in one building, and you're in the other?
No, we're still, no, we're still going to be occupying Northcrest and providing services out of there. All we're doing is moving some of the staff and their computers, about half of the staff, over to the fairgrounds for a few weeks. But we're not going to stop providing services in Northcrest. In fact, the whole point is, we want to provide as much service as we possibly can. The doors will still be open, people will be answering the phones, they will still get seen right there at Northcrest facility.
Okay. All right. I'll entertain a motion, unless there's any other.
Move to approve.
It's been moved. Move to approve, second?
Second.
It's been seconded. Any public comment on this item? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board. Tony, could you please poll the vote?
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, that's been moved and approved. We have a timed item right now?
May I request that item five come before this, so I can at least explain the genesis of the historic of where we are?
Sure. Let's, we'll go ahead and take that up with Dr. Duncan, and we'll have you talk right, your presentation will be right after, we're going to, okay, so we'll bring up item five at this point, which was polled.
And item five is the appointment on the, for me...
Participation in the Sutter Health Hospital study.
And I would just like to give a little history of what's happened, and the interactions that have gone, that have happened. I have been on what is called the two-by-two for the healthcare district for a number of years. And Mike is the other person on the two-by-two district. Mike was asked if he would be part of the study team, and for whatever reason, he didn't want to participate, he asked me if I would do it. And it was a, not an off-the-cuff comment, it was a very quick discussion, but it was agreed upon that, okay, yes, since you're on the two-by-two, you'll go forward. So I didn't really give it another, you know, much thought, other than it makes sense, because I've been pretty active in this Sutter issue from the beginning. In fact, it was my push that I wanted to make sure that the healthcare district actually filed suit in court, in order to see if we could get an injunction on the regionalization. And that is still happening. And I've been, I've worked with county council several times on trying to figure out what this lease looks like, because it hangs on, it hangs on the lease. So I ended up, I got an email from a woman named Tracy Van, who is the Woman for Sutter Health, that is organizing what they call a request for proposal, and the request for proposal is asking for a strategic option study. So she told me that she was sending me this study. I received the study. It's a, it's about a nine-page document, and when I read the nine-page document, it reads like most RFPs that I've ever seen. And the RFP calls for, calls for the operator, they refer to them as the, I refer to them as the company, but they refer to them as the suppliers. And it calls for the supplier to do a, look at the advantages and disadvantages without making a recommendation, but to identify the advantages and disadvantages of three primary categories. It asks that they take a look at, should Sutter Coast Health remain part of Sutter Health in its current governance structure, i.e. status quo? Two, should Sutter Coast Hospital remain part of Sutter Health in its current governance stature, but pursue alternative business strategies such as seeking joint ventures, reconfiguring service and developing service lines, pursuing critical access, identifying alternative rural funding, and three other options, e.g., affiliations with another healthcare system, to, or move to a freestanding status, et cetera. Now, each option was required to include the ability to meet community healthcare needs now and in the future, hospital finance, and hospital operations. So that was the, that was the primary goal of this RFP. So I made a phone call to her, because I wanted to ask some questions. And my first set of questions was, how did you come about selecting your suppliers? And she said that she went to the Sutter Health Business and Development Department to the VP. She asked, what should the priorities be? That VP said, your priorities need to be a company that understands rural health, a company that is acquainted with California health, and a company that is acquainted with the new healthcare system that is coming from the federal government. So she did a query, and came up with 10 different companies that met that criteria. She went back to the department head, and to the VP of that department, and said, what about these 10 companies? That person said, you should ask four or five other people in this department to see what they think, and because they, he said, the community development and engagement portion needs to be a very high priority for these companies. So when she did that, five of the firms dropped off, because they were pretty much data-driven firms. And so then she ended up with five firms that were community, that had a community component to their evaluation, as opposed to just data-driven. They sent out five requests, they got five, they got four proposals back, one denial proposal. So then, after that, the proposals were coming, they weren't coming until they came to me last Friday. And, but I, in conversation with her, after I had spoken with Dr. Duncan, and the understanding of the people who had denied, because part of my issue is, if you're not at the table, you don't have a voice. And I'm not sure what happens if a study goes forward, and we have not participated, will we have standing if that study has to be challenged in a court case? Because if you're not, sometimes you don't get to have standing if you didn't participate. So I sent her an email, and this is my email, that we, I said, we have a problem that could be addressed if there were a possibility of delaying the interviews for a few weeks. The local advocates, doctors, and some Board of Supervisors members would like to see a more developed plan as to the role of community involvement and engagement. There is also a continued desire to secure outside funding in order to remove any question of Sutter predetermining the outcome of a strategic option study. I understand this is a huge request, but I really believe that this community and Sutter Health need to have dialogue. I know this community, and find that when reasonable requests are honored, the community comes to the table. This request does not mean that we need to reset the process, but we need to clear up items and get the study moving. Please forward the RFPs, in case the interviews do move forward. And my board meeting is on the 14th, which the study will be discussed, and if we choose not to participate, I will notify you at the close of the meeting. So then she responded back to me, did not give me a three-week extension by any means. I kind of thought that that was going to be the case. But she said, thank you for sharing the thoughts about delaying the vendor selection process for the strategic options. In speaking with Ken Hall, the Chair of the Board, and Linda Horn, the new interim CEO of Sutter Coast Hospital, I have done the following, which we believe will meet some of the desire for more, your desire for more community involvement, and the board's desire to keep the process moving. The four consulting firms that have been contacted and specifically asked to focus their presentation next time with the selection committee outlining their community engagement process, to include, but not limited to, at what stages will the community be engaged? How will the community be engaged? Who from the community will be engaged? Not looking for specific names, but rather categories of, types of people. What information will they be seeking from the community? And have, please explain how this information, and how the information informs the study, and documentation within the study? And what is the report-out process of the study? In addition, given the collaborative approach that each of the consulting firms plan to utilize if they are selected, the selection committee members will be invited back to the table to work directly with the selected firm, to further refine the engagement strategy for the community. I also called her again, and said, can I ask any question of these firms that I want? And the answer was yes. Because for me, one of my issues is, is it appropriate for a healthcare corporation to alter their level of service in order to get better reimbursement from the federal government? And to me, if a firm said, well, yeah, we would think that that would be a common practice, I would question that they had an ethical ability. I understand the fear of, is this a done deal? When I read this, when I read the RFP, and when I have perused these firms, I call into question, could a firm, a multimillion-dollar firm, actually want to put their reputation on the line, that they lied and cheated for Sutter Health? So I understand the significance of people's emotion about this, but I also want to ask this board to at least put me on the hospital study group, but then if we would choose to not have it, at least we had a member on the study group. Because it, I'm not sure legally where this path is taking us, but I'm concerned that we need to have standing. Thank you.
Okay. So at this point, Dr. Duncan, we had you as a timed item at 1115.
Chair Sullivan?
Yeah.
I'm a little troubled right now, before Dr. Duncan speaks. I pulled this item. I'm the one that is allowing Supervisor McClure to go into this monologue here. You've not asked me why I pulled this item.
Because we're not taking that up right now.
Well, you took it up.
We haven't voted on this, Roger. And Supervisor Gitlin, what is your question?
I understand, but you allowed Supervisor McClure to do this, this monologue, without having any other side presented by the original precipitating factor of me pulling the item for discussion. I think you should allow some balance.
Okay.
Okay, so before you begin, Dr. Duncan, let me just say, I'd like to clear the air on all of this. There's some issue of whether this issue has even been discussed before, in closed session or in open session, about sending Supervisor McClure to participate in a Sutter Health hospital study. Well, I don't support it. And I'm going to tell you why I don't support this participation, because I've come to learn that the results have already been decided, and that Delmar County, to lend its prestige and its reputation to participate in this health study, would be fruitless. It would be unnecessary. So the Sutter Healthcare District in question is actually, because it's paying for its own service, it's patently fraudulent. So as a secondary note, I would oppose dispatching Supervisor McClure to speak for Delmar County, or District One constituents, who I represent. Supervisor has displayed an agenda that, in my opinion, does not encourage the healthy growth of our hospital, or the community it serves. Chairman Sullivan, if anyone should go to this meeting, it should be you as the chair. You have my emphatic no vote in allowing Supervisor McClure to participate in this study.
Okay. We don't have a motion on the floor, and we're going to go to Dr. Duncan's timed presentation. We're not done with item five, but Dr. Duncan, is there a motion on item five? Okay.
Yes, I submitted a motion to, the motion is to approve.
It's not a negative motion. It's if you, if you...
Average no vote.
Yeah, it's basically, if there's no motion, then that doesn't carry. So, Dr. Duncan?
Rather than putting any negative spin on it, I like the way you're running the meeting, and I would like to hear from Dr. Duncan before any actions taken on anything.
Yeah. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak before you. My name is Greg Duncan, and I'm the Chief of Staff of Sutter Coast Hospital. I want to make two quick comments about Supervisor McClure's last statement. The term "off-the-cuff discussion" was a quote that I took notes on during our contemporaneous conversation about a week ago, and I actually didn't attribute that much to it, but it was related to an off-the-cuff discussion in closed session of 4/9/13, during which Supervisor McClure was chosen to represent the Board of Supervisors on the hospital study. The second quick comment, before I start my prepared statement, is, while a seat at the table is important, as we also discussed, a study is only as good as the information that is provided to the consultants. I certainly don't impugn the consultants, but they'll only come up with the conclusion that's based on the information they're given. And I'll just give one quick example. So this is, I'm reading from an email from this Tracy Van, who you've been in contact with, and this is a communication between her and the consultant groups. And the consultant group asks the question, does Sutter Health have a specific operational plan for the hospital? Tracy Van answers, no. And I would remind the audience and the board that last summer Eugene Zouksey told hospital employees, and even made a public statement, that regionalization is a 99% certainty. To me, that would qualify as indicating an operational plan. Now, I'd like to move on to my letter. This is a letter that's signed by six local residents, five physicians, and Mr. Jim Costin, who is a former Chair of the Board of Directors of Desert Regional Medical Center. Now, the supervisors have seen this letter, the public has not, and I'm going to be stopping during segments of the letter to try to provide documentation of some of the statements. One of the frustrations this entire time is the closed hospital boardroom. It's made it very difficult for me to get information out to the public, as they hold their meetings in strict secrecy and will not allow observers. So the letter reads as follows, Dear Mike, Mr. Sullivan, Chair Sullivan, our community is acutely aware of Sutter Health's attempt to ta... is acutely aware of Sutter Health's attempt to take ownership of our hospital and of the possible implementation of critical access hospital designation." I'll stop right there because the critical access issue is very real, but some of the Sutter-affiliated individuals have stated that we're using it to scare people. So I'll just present two quick examples that would tend to refute that. So this is the critical access study that Sutter Health performed on our hospital in 2012. Now, they won't release the data after multiple requests. They will not give the Chief of Staff, the hospital, the data, or anyone else. But they finally agreed to release their summary, and I'm just going to read the last sentence of the summary of the critical access hospital for 2012. Quoting from the study, "Based on the information presented above, we believe that the hospital should pursue the critical access hospital program." Now, the second item I'd like to read related to that is the 2012 year-end report. This is a document written by our former CEO Eugene Sukci, and it reads as follows, "Given the deterioration in the financial performance of Sutter Coast Hospital, exploration of critical access hospital status may need to take precedence over regionalization." I'll make one aside comment, that despite this claim of financial problems that Sutter Health and the Sutter Coast Hospital attorneys are refusing to honor the subpoena that was delivered by the Del Norte Healthcare District in their lawsuit, which requests the financial information, so we have no way of verifying that there are financial losses. Secondly, I have been asking in writing for over eight months to meet with our hospital accountant to look at the hospital books. That's my unrestricted right as a Director of the hospital, and I have been refused access to the accountant, so we have no way of verifying those claims." I'm going to go back to the letter. "In addition, the medical staff received a formal legal opinion last week which identifies several violations of California law within Sutter Health's regional hospital bylaws. Furthermore, medical staff leadership is in contact with the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services, the Joint Commission on Hospital Accreditation, and the Office of the California Attorney General in relation to our conflict with Sutter Health and the Board of Directors of Sutter Coast Hospital. As you know, Sutter Health has initiated a strategic option study for Sutter Coast Hospital. The hospital board approved a collaboratively-funded study." Just to document that, I'm going to read from 2/7/13, Sutter Coast Hospital Board of Directors Meeting Minutes, this is a meeting I attended, reads as follows, "The Sutter Coast Hospital Board of Directors will support a collaboratively-funded and independent study to assist in making the best decision for the hospital." As you know, the study now is entirely funded by Sutter, so what we voted for as a hospital board is not what's taking place. Back to the letter again. "Our feedback from the community indicates they perceive studies, Sutter study, as illegitimate. All of the five community members or groups who were initially asked to participate in the study, including the Chair of the Board of Supervisors, declined to do so, citing multiple concerns, including the study design, minimal community participation, and the community participation is limited to four hours during the selection process." That was from last month's board meeting. "And lack of independent funding. I, Chief of Staff, was dismissed from the boardroom during the planning phase of the study, which several attorneys have told me is illegal. Independent funding for the study evaporated after study coordinator Tracy Van sent a talking points memo to the hospital board, which stated," and I'm going to quote from the talking points memo, it's right here, dated 12/11/12, "While the study may include other healthcare systems or parties interested in aligning with Sutter Coast Hospital, we believe that Sutter Health is the best partner for us now and in the future." So based on that, it's my understanding that the outside funding evaporated, and the study is now totally funded and controlled by Sutter Health. "The general consensus among the community members who were invited but declined to participate in the hospital study is that Sutter Health was merely using them to provide a veil of legitimacy to an illegitimate process. As written by a local resident who declined to participate in the study," now I'm going to quote from an email from this local resident who declined, quote, "I will not be participating in the selection committee. While it is clear that a study needs to be done, front-loading it with a few community names to validate it serves no purpose at this point because of the tainted community feeling towards the whole process. The healthcare district resolved unanimously not to participate in the study under the current constraints imposed by Sutter Health." And this is important. We want to be part of a study. We want to be part of a valid study. "The hospital physicians have twice resolved not to participate under these constraints for the same reason. Community participation is limited to four hours during the selection of one of Sutter's pre-approved consultants." And just to show that, I've got some medical staff minute notes here, and I'll just read from this real quick. Motion, this is from Medical Staff Meeting 4/11/13. "Medical staff would like to participate in the study, but we need to know our rights and responsibilities in the study, which should be collaboratively-funded and include meaningful physician input from the outset. Second motion, we want to go back to an independent group and start again." Motion seconded, confirmed by unanimous consent. And that's my last attachment, so I'll finish up with the letter here. "The supervisors may be unaware of the following additional information. Community participants are not allowed to discuss the study proposals with one another before the conference calls with the consultants, nor are they allowed to bring any other community members into the loop." Now, I'm going to read from an email from the Board Chair, who wrote, quote, "Bringing others into the loop, even as advisors in the background, will slow down the process, lead to interminable delays, and muddy the results. Briefly, the RFP, which is here, contains information which we certainly appear to believe is inaccurate. There's some errors that were, that were given to the consultants." Again, this kind of gets back to, you can have a seat at the table, but if they're going off this information and it's not accurate, then neither are the results. And then finally, "The hospital board has been included from the conference calls with the consulting firms, and the hospital board was not provided the proposals or the cost information from the consultants until I specifically asked for this material a few days ago on 5/10/13. This all in spite of the fact that our hospital's paying for the study." My question for the supervisors, before you make a final decision on whether or not to participate in Sutter's study, the undersigned of this letter would like to provide relevant documents for your review. "We'd also like to understand the process which led to your selection of Supervisor McClure to participate in the study. I contacted Supervisor Sullivan on 4/7/13 with concerns that Sutter Health would use community members in an attempt to provide legitimacy to their study, and I contacted the entire Board of Supervisors 4/20/13 with additional concerns. Would it be possible to pull the vote of 4/9/13? We have also heard that Supervisor McClure was selected to work with Sutter Health during the closed session of 4/9/13, but we did not find this item on the meeting agenda, meeting minutes, or within the action items for the closed session of 4/9/13. We also received no notification that the Board of Supervisors had appointed a member to represent them on the Sutter study until I was notified by Sutter Health in the hospital boardroom on 5/2/13. We're not questioning your authority to appoint a member to Sutter Health's study. We would just like to be informed when the supervisors exercise your authority. We look forward to working with the supervisors on this vital community issue." And I think, you know, the one thing that we're all going to agree on is that there's a, there's a communication problem here, but I think we've done our best to communicate to this Board. We've been here several times, I've several emails back and forth, and we don't feel like we were properly informed or included in the decision that was made on 4/9. I'll just read real quick an email from Tracy Van, so Tracy Van again is the study coordinator, employee of Sutter Health, and she says here, "I have communicated with Supervisor McClure several times over email, and we had one brief phone call last week about her interest in continuing on the committee in the event we're unable to get any other community members to join in the selection process and instead use hospital board members." She again said she would stay involved in the process, and we discussed scheduling the conference calls the week of May 13th, which worked best for her schedule. It's just you're communicating really well with Sutter, but we're frustrated because we're not getting the same level of communication, in my opinion. Just to kind of summarize everything, I think Supervisor Finnegan, of all the people that ever opined about this issue, had the most insightful and accurate assessment of Sutter Health when he said, and I think it's okay because he said it in open session, "Dealing with Sutter Health is dealing like with Mr. Potter on It's a Wonderful Life. It's a very difficult, impossible organization to have transparency with. They are the masters of this kind of thing, and if the supervisors can work with Mr. Potter, then that's great. I don't want to question that, but I do think that was a very accurate assessment, and I appreciate your, the opportunity to share some of this information with you today. Thank you."
Dr. Duncan, I'm going to let Supervisor McClure respond, but just for clarification, I'm actually the one that made the Mr. Potter comment at the meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Anyway.
I should have given credit to the Chair.
Just for a correction on that, I think I fed it to him. Yeah, you know, and we're actually, this meeting, this item on the agenda is formalizing the process of, that's why it's on the consent agenda for Supervisor McClure to be on that. The discussion that was had, without giving too much because it is a closed session, was that Sutter had contacted me, which is, that's outside of closed session, and I didn't feel comfortable because I hadn't been at the process from the very beginning. And that's how Supervisor McClure was there. And I don't know how much more I can actually discuss that was on 4/9.
Just, I think you can state there was no motion, nor a vote was actually taken.
Yeah, it was more of a consensus. It was, there was no official vote on that, and that's the reason it's on the agenda today. And Supervisor Gitlin was there in that same closed session, so...
I would just like to clarify that on my, when I spoke with her on the phone, when I spoke with Tracy on the phone, and I said, "Who else has agreed to do this?", she said, "So far, no one." And I said, "Whoa, that's..." I didn't say, "Oh, well, I'm going to go if no one else goes." And then there was an email back, I think, that said that there were, they were going to put board members on. And for me, I felt that that was a giant setup, because if the Board's been included and now they're not, they're going to be the people doing the interview, I felt that that was going to be a total conflicted response. Then I got an email on the 16th from her that said that Dr. Sandy Sanders, who I don't know, and I was going to talk with this Board about, because if she's an employee of Sutter Health or Sutter, the Sutter system, that probably wouldn't be a good choice. And the other was a person named Ted Fitzgerald, who is the Executive Director of the Port of Brookings. And the third is Jan Morehouse, who is now the Executive Director of what is called the Rising Star Foundation. So in no way was I like trying to, my goal, like for today, is I think that we should have, we should appoint for the study. And then if we discuss and say that the study is faulty, then we decline to participate in the study. But what that does is it puts us on record that we want to have a study. Okay?
Well, we want to have a study, too.
Yeah, I know, but that's how we, to get onto the record, to go that way. I mean, so that's where I'm coming from, and I, I just, I am absolutely floored because I have been so outspoken against critical access that to be accused of being in bed with Mr. Potter, just is offensive to me.
I think that's an extension of the analogy. I certainly didn't say that.
It just feels really hurtful.
Supervisor Finnegan.
Yeah. I have a little bit different take on this. I think that, number one, you've been the expert yourself and Dr. Caldwell and your wives that have kept us informed. And one of the things you kept us informed was, was this sham that was being perpetrated upon the community by Sutter Health and then further exacerbated by this study that was even more of a sham. Having said that, there was another constant in that Supervisor McClure has been involved through the two-by-twos, keeping the board informed, and taking the lead with regards to some of the lawsuits and things like that. I think if, if there has been an error, anybody wants to accuse Supervisor McClure of anything, it's thinking that she can stop this train by herself, which sometimes as politicians we tend to think so, that we can right the wrong, and I think she's underestimated just how heavy and how fast this train is coming. I, my personal perspective was that this Board had agreed not to go into the study as you requested at one of your public presentations. At the same time, we also have concurred that Supervisor McClure has done a wonderful job on behalf of the supervisors of keeping us informed and being in the dialogue and helping us along the way with tactics. I think where these, the misconception has come out that this Board never took a position to be in this study, something that you had asked us not to do, and I assumed that we weren't going to do. So I was a little confused in that approving Supervisor McClure's participation in the hospital study. I would vote to approve Supervisor McClure remaining and helping to take the lead along with Supervisor Sullivan, all the dealings that were going on with this issue. As far as the Board participating in the study, no. I thought we had already said that we weren't going to until the table had been cleaned and the proper players were there, and we were going to get our direction from you, and with that, that's what I had to say.
Well, and I think, I think the jointly, additionally, just a few weeks ago, it was supposed to be a collaboratively-funded study. So there was a collaboration, and it's more recently come to the knowledge that Sutter's funding this 100%, and there is no other entity, and the other body pulled out. So that's the other...
Changes the game.
Yeah.
Exactly. I mean, I think you and I are saying the same exact thing.
We, we had never taken a position not to be in the study because we thought the study was going to be with the community...
No, originally, six weeks ago or whatever, one presentation by Dr. Duncan was that there was this study coming forward that was just going to be a sham, that you were going to be participating...
No, but that's when it was going to be mutually funded and mutually developed.
I don't, I don't know the exact timing, the funding, well, actually, I do, and it was a long time before you just said, because the statement that I read, that "we believe Sutter Health is our best partner now and in the future," was from 12/12, so the funding pulled out long ago, let's say five months.
Supervisor Hammison, do you want to say something? Dr. Duncan, you're our partner, and I'm going to treat you with all the respect and dignity a true partner is. Whatever was referred to or not referred to in a so-called closed-session item April 9th was not what is presented here now. There was no vote, it was a consensus, and I'm not part of that. I don't agree with participating in a study that is set up to be fraudulent from the get-go. If the people who are paying for this are the ones that are conducting this study, then the results, a blind man can see what the results would be. So I don't support this, this Board of Supervisors and its prestige that it lends to this community participating in something that the end results are already known. Why go to a poker table when you know the cards are already fixed? Or you're going to go out and you're going to roll a snake eyes? Why go there? A seat at the table doesn't mean anything here. We don't, we should not participate in this, and I'm deferring to your expert advice. You're a full partner here. Thank you.
Supervisor Hammison.
I guess my confusion was, I guess is the word, participation, because I don't, I guess I didn't realize at what level we were expected to participate when the meaning that I, or, all along, we have wanted to have information, and we have wanted to have input. And I agree with David down there, David, and Martha also, in, I guess, I guess it's the level of participation, because if we're expected to be at the table and agree with the study and as, as part of that participation, then I would be wholly against it. If we are to be there in participation to find out what the study says and the direction the study is going, not necessarily, I guess, being part and parcel to the study, then I would, you know, I would lean a little bit more towards being there and finding out what's going on. I have no issue at all with not being part of the study at all, if we think it's going to be so biased that, that we are going to help them... to be so biased that, that we are going to help them in their bias, at all. I mean, you know, we, I think we've all been on the same page as far as the direction that we want our hospital to go, and, and I commend you for, for leading that. I think you're doing a wonderful job. And I think, I think Supervisor McClure is, is on the same page with that, too, and we certainly don't want to jeopardize the direction that we're going by participating, if that's what's going to happen.
And I, and I think you raise a good point. There's still a lot of misunderstanding about the level of participation. It's four hours, there'll be four consultant groups, they've all been prescreened by Sutter, they've already been given the inaccurate information in the RFP, and the inaccurate information in the emails that I read. So you have four hours to select which one of those four pre-approved consultants will be the final consultant. At that point, your participation ends. And this is my problem, if, if they won't open the books to us, if they're not showing us actual data, for example, when I called the consultant that did the critical access study data, did the critical access study for our hospital, he would not release the data, and he said, "You're not my client", so then I called Sutter Health, and they said they won't release it either. Now, if the physicians of this community are not allowed to see the data that's going into the most important decision, probably for future healthcare of this county ever, I have a problem working with that corporation, especially when, again, they've just taken over the funding. It started out as a good idea, there was significant mission creep, and now it's something very different, and I do think that a seat at the table is, is both irrelevant, other than giving them this veil of legitimacy.
I, I think at this point, then probably what we need is a direction to go, and, and just to clear up the confusion, we've been on the same side of the table that you have, and if there's any misunderstanding at all, I, you know, I'll take the blame on that. Supervisor McClure is, is not doing something that's conspiracy in, in hand with Sutter, Sutter Coast, it's basically to keep the board involved in the process, but if the, the thing is so slanted, maybe the, the action of the board should be going forward that we, we agree to participate under the following circumstances and criteria, that it's a collaboratively funded project, that each of the items you have addressed in your, your letter should be included in our letter, to Sutter saying, "We, you know, we would love to participate, we think the hospital's an important part of the community, but we need to make sure it's a legitimate study in the process."
Right, and that's what we've said as well, from the beginning, and what we'd ask, you know, going forward especially, is if there are supervisors that are communicating back and forth with Sutter Health in a manner that is different than our understanding, that then we would be included in those emails, so we would have some idea as to what's happening. Well, I mean, going forward, I'd like to have them contemporaneously.
You got your mic off, too. I, I think also that two-by-two, Supervisor McClure and I sit on with the healthcare district, I think that's probably a great avenue to, to continue the dialogue and, and go along that direction.
Exactly. I think that what we all need to agree here is that, Doctor, you've been the expert, you've brought this to us, you've lived and breathed this with Dr. Caldwell for the past several years, as well as identifying some possible solutions. And every time that there seems to be a little light at the end of the tunnel, Sutter shuts the door on you.
Right.
We, as a board, have taken the lead from you, and we will continue to do that, and so I think it's just a communication process, maybe you can come more often. I don't know how to say that we are partners, and, and maybe there was a misunderstanding, maybe there wasn't, but I, I think, I think that we need to be, continue, from us to you, share information as well, and, and you have our commitment on that as well.
Thank you.
I want to thank you, you know, for everything that you have done, everything you will continue to do, and including us as a partner, and that's all we're trying to do, I think, here is.
Well, and you get a David, you get a David and Goliath thing of, of, without us all operating together, then it's, it's David versus Goliath, and that, that doesn't work. Supervisor Hammison.
And I, I would like to ask, just ask point-blank, if you think our participation is going to be detrimental to our cause.
In the current study, yes, absolutely, but what we all want to do is come back and have a valid study that we all should participate in, and that's what we've been asking.
I would certainly want to follow that lead.
Yeah, so maybe going forward, then, and I, obviously, I'm in a position at this point to make the motion, but possibly Supervisor would make a motion to, to respond back to Sutter Health, that we would love to participate under the following circumstances, is that the, the, the study has a legitimacy to it, and it's collaboratively funded, because there is funding sources out there, it's not.
They're still there.
Collaborative, funded, it has to be developed.
Exactly. Right. So maybe.
And that's, that's consistent with what we've been doing. So I think the direction is there, it's clear, it's on the record. Keep up the good work, and let us know.
So are we drafting a letter, then? Is that a, will it be the consensus of the board, or?
Yeah, I would, I would think we would want to, and, and if that's the case, I mean, if we're, if we're wanting to tie this into a motion, and if they do do those things, I would think that we would have Supervisor McClure be a participant in that.
Great.
So, well, I think, did, and I'll be happy to make the motion, did, Doctor, did you shoot off a letter to them telling them why you would not be, or why the physicians would not be participating?
Yes, I believe that all the supervisors had an email attachment.
Right.
Yeah, or maybe, just Martha did, I'm sorry.
Would that letter suffice to have the same talking points of why we're not participating for the supervisors to adopt, is the one that you sent?
I would certainly think so, I don't have it in front of me.
My motion is to send that letter on behalf of the board of supervisors.
I think part of it would, but I think that when you make reference in the letter about the bylaws, and then, I'm not sure that we have that reach.
Well, then, I would ask, use that letter as a boilerplate and have staff, together with county council, to tweak it, to take out the irrelevant parts that refer to physicians instead of supervisors.
Okay, thank you.
And I would agree.
Okay. It's been a motion second, and we're going to open a public comment. Dr. Dun. Okay, we, we get a three, three-minute, at 12 o'clock, we're, we're going to recess, and we'll continue at 12 o'clock, so don't go anywhere. Okay, there was an item that we have a motion on the floor, so I'm going to open it.
Point of order, point of order, Ms. Cheeck. What motion do we have on the floor? I have not heard the motion.
Well, you can have the clerk read it back.
And I have not heard it seconded. So let's just clear the air.
I made the motion Supervisor Hammison seconded. Clerk, would you read the motion, please?
Can we repeat, we're moving real quick. Can I speak, Mr. Finnegan? Would you, would you please repeat the motion so we hear?
Actually, the clerk of the board would do that. Tony, if you could repeat that, please.
There was a motion on to approve Supervisor McClure's participation in Sutter Health hospital study based on a letter being sent to Sutter Health on behalf of the board with options of joint collaborative effort and points of action of participation.
I don't know, I don't think they were options, I think they were requirements, requirements of, unless the, it would be in a study that met the following requirements that Dr. Duncan had indicated in his letter, based on the letter that Dr. Duncan sent.
And who's the second on that?
I was.
Are we at discussion yet on this?
We're going to open for public comment, actually. So, a public comment on this item. If you could identify yourself into the microphone, you have three minutes to speak, so.
By Dennis Road, Quest City.
Do you have his mic on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. You, you need to pull the mic to you a little bit.
A little closer?
Perfect.
Okay. I worked with consultants over a 40-year period, and then a little consultant myself, and I would like to mention that it's very hard for a consultant to forget who's paying him. And I understand that this study will be, a consultant will be a major player, and he will be paid by Sutter Health. Thank you.
Thank you. Listen.
My name is Rita Moore. I'm in a patient of Dr. Duncan's for quite some time, and I'd like to notice how this hospital came to be in such a poor mess. It seems to me that we need a new administration. It seems to me that we need somebody new in there to change things around. We, elderly, I just turned 80, if I were to be admitted to that hospital and had had four days to stay, and then had to be shipped someplace else, I have nobody to come and get me. I don't even have the funds to get back. Has anybody realized that, that there's also handicapped, disabled people that need to, that don't need this frustration and worry? And I know where your priorities come from, there's the airport facilities that you're doing work with versus the hospital, which is needed, really. All I can say is that I was shocked to find out that there was a lot of people that didn't back Dr. Duncan. And '94, my husband was shipped to San Francisco, because he couldn't stay here any longer after two weeks. After a week, they said he was ready to go home. We had no way of getting home, so you know who, what happened? They had to call air ambulance. Who paid for it? Medicare. How much can Medicare pay for? I can't afford to be shipped someplace and come back, so there goes Medicare or Medi-Cal. Stop and think about that when you're making your si, decision and your study, because I think that this hospital needs something else. We need to prove it with new administration.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Yes?
Hi, I'm Doug Corrigan. I am a prior emergency responder, a resident of this county since 2001. My involvement with Dr. Duncan came basically when all this, this whole situation came to light, and I wondered what a regionalization really meant. So good old Google came to the forefront, and I found two to three studies just within a matter of minutes that basically showed where regionalization works and where it doesn't, there is a place for it. But I provided those studies from, I believe they were from universities, as I recall, to Dr. Duncan, and my, the conclusion I came to was because of where we live, and our isolation here, and our transportation, regionalization just isn't going to work. I would hate to see us be part of a predetermined study, notwithstanding some sort of, you know, legal standing, I wouldn't want that to go away, but on the other hand, I just don't, I've sat on too many committees where you better come up with what management wants you to come up with, and then they say, "Well, gee, it went to committee", I mean, I, I just don't want to see us be a part of that. The hospital needs to grow, to, to help this community grow, not get smaller. And when you throw in the prison, the jail, and all those sorts of things, it's just, it's a disaster if, if we allow that to happen, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Mr. Feller.
Scott Feller, District Representative for Senator Jim Nielsen. Senator Nielsen supports a robust medical facility for our community. As such, we've been, the staff has looked into this whole proposal, and have had, had access to a lot of the consultants' reports and studies. We've reviewed them, reviewed the numbers, we know what's driving the hospital. So you have to ask yourself, if the previous consultants and previous studies are what drives what they're doing now, what are you getting now? This RFP, the proposals that came back, you had a low end of about a quarter million dollars and a high end of about $385,000 for this. For four hours of participation, what are you getting? What are they doing? What's that money being spent on? You need to take a pretty good, hard look at this, and maybe at, as it was said earlier, what is the study? What's the matrix of the study? What is it we really want to come out of that? Which should be an honest and open discussion, and honest and open, reviewable, transparent results for the community, because the community has a very vested interest in this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Dr. Duncan.
I'm Anne Marie Duncan. I just had a question about how this item got to be on the consent agenda today, this morning, for before the timed item that Greg and Kevin Caldwell were scheduled to give, so I was wondering how that transpired. As on my understanding.
Actually, I, I talked to your husband prior, and the consent agenda had been set before him and I had the conversation, so there wasn't anything to do with, and that's part of the reason, well, Supervisor Gitlin pulled it, but the, the intent was to pull it, to have a discussion, act on it right after his presentation, so it wasn't put on the consent agenda before the conversation, it, or it was put on before the consent agenda, before the conversation, excuse me. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. The other question I have was, on April 20th, Greg sent a long email to Martha McClure and the rest of the board explaining the medical sta- McClure and the rest of the Board explaining the medical staff's concerns with Sutter's study, and the fact that the medical staff had unanimously resolved to not participate in the study. My understanding is that Martha had already decided to participate at that point, on April eighteenth. According to Tracy Van's email, you had already communicated that you would participate, and I'm just wondering, did you get those emails that we sent on April twentieth and April twenty-first?
I did get those emails, and I had a very quick discussion with Gretchen, that those were going to be my talking points and my questions at the, during the process of interviewing these companies, on how were you going to respond to these issues? How can you do a study and respond to an issue if the docs aren't involved? It was, I was trying to form the questions in relationship to that document. I didn't think I was gonna go as far into that document where it talks about the bylaw changes, because I, I didn't know that, I don't know that they would be able to respond to that, but I was gonna try to formulate my questions in relationship to the issues that have been put forward. I mean, I was gonna try to manipulate this system as much as I could to get our issues on the table with the consultants.
Okay. My concern is that you were corresponding with Tracy Van, but you didn't answer Greg's emails. If you had them, I'm just wondering why you didn't think it was necessary to respond.
It was an information email that didn't have any questions on it. I mean, it had the statement, but it didn't say-
Well, it was an expression of extreme concern from the medical staff about the study that you had agreed to participate on, and I'm just concerned about that.
Okay.
I guess I'm not perfect. You know, I'm trying hard.
And, and, just in fairness to, in fairness to everyone, there, we were completely behind Dr. Duncan in the process, and I, I think, I thought we had resolved that earlier with the motion that's on the floor, is to make sure that we include in, I'm, actually, do you wanna go ahead and wrap up, 'cause you, you're at the-
No, I'm wrapped up. I just wanted to ask those questions.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Supervisor Hemmings?
And, and if I would like to, I'd like to make sure that we're clarifying the motion that basically is on the table now. At this point, we would have no participation in the study that's going on right now.
Correct.
And until they came to the table with, with what, what we requested, the study, how the study is, is to be put together, we are not going to put anybody to, there is not gonna be anybody to participate. So, if that's, if, if that's a clarification of the motion, or just at this point, we will not put anybody forward until, until we can get agreement on how this study's gonna-
And, and, just to reiterate, Hemmings, we, the, the motion is that unless they meet, unless Sutter Health is willing to meet the conditions that Dr. Duncan's letter and the physicians have requested, we will not be participating. If they choose to address those, then Supervisor McClure would be the person that represents the Board on, in, in that study. Supervisor Gitlin, and then Dr. Caldwell, let you come up next.
There's just too much smoke in the air in this one, folks. I'm sorry. We gotta take a step back on this. There should be no letter being sent at this time. Clearly, I am not in the, of the opinion that Supervisor McClure should be that representative, and that's on this motion right here, that if we should go forward, Supervisor McClure will be that representative. I oppose that. So there really are two issues here, but this thing needs to be defeated. It just reeks. This is a dog and pony show. And I won't, I, I just can't believe that we're, we're trying to figure out how to, how to deal with the devil. They've already declared who they are. Why are we even talking to these people right now? They wanna move to regionalization. They wanna move to critical access. Does anybody not get that? So, we need to be, as a Board, we need to be united on this. Put all these personality issues aside and all this other stuff. We should not be participating in the destruction of our health care in Del Norte County. I can't say it anymore clearly and more loudly. No letter, no motion. I vote no.
We're not voting.
Dr. Caldwell, could you please, you're, you were the next person on public comment.
Thank you. I'm Kevin Caldwell, and, and I'm pretty sure I have the dubious distinction of having more experience with Sutter Health than anyone else in this county.
Congratulations.
I've been on the chief, I've been on the, the medical staff since before it was Sutter Coast Hospital. I was chief of staff and therefore on the Hospital Board of Trustees in nineteen eighty-eight, and two thousand ten, and two thousand eleven. I've been on the Del Norte Healthcare District Board since two thousand and eight. I have dealt with them in so many ways, on so many levels, and have never found them to be at all trustworthy. They have one agenda, it's their hidden agenda, and I just wanna reinforce that with everyone. They are not to be trusted on any level. And as a healthcare district member, I'm crushed because we are taking the lead in the fight with Sutter Health. We're spending a lot of taxpayer money, which just hurts badly. And we need help, and they show no sign, no sign of backing down. There's all these back office legal maneuvers they're doing to cost the taxpayers of this county the maximum amount of money and to crush us. There is no give with these people. They're out to crush us, and we have to be prepared for that, and all stick together and make sure that that doesn't happen. Thanks.
Great. Good question. I have a question. Dr. Caldwell?
Dr. Caldwell, I, I just have a question. Do you think we should write a letter stating what our concerns are and what we need out of Sutter Coast in order for this study to be legitimate?
So, the other, the other four, the other four groups or individuals did write back something saying, we're, you know, just to the effect of, "We, we would love to participate in a legitimate study, but this isn't a legitimate study."
So, the, the question of-
The question is, do you think we should write a letter to that effect, or do we bury our heads in the sand and just do nothing?
Well, for me, I wouldn't mind just saying a legitimate, saying just that. You'd be happy to participate in a legitimate study.
I, and I think, I just want clarification on this, it'd be the physicians, more or less, specifically Dr. Caldwell and Dr. Duncan, that it, the motion on the floor is for us to send a letter to Sutter saying, "We would love to participate in the survey if the following conditions are met to make this legitimate study."
Well, I mean, I think that just opens it up too much for them, because they'll say, "Okay, we re, we reworked it and-"
But the conditions are the ones you laid out.
The conditions would be-
Yeah, with the bylaws changes, we, we would, we would-
I don't have any of that.
Yeah. We, we would, I mean, that's the, the point of the letter, is to send something saying, "We're concerned about it. We think it's a good idea to study it, but we're concerned about the shape it's turned into at this point, and unless you're gonna meet these conditions, we won't be participating."
I think it was that the letter would be requested that it would be a mutually funded-
Collaboratively funded.
Collaborative, funded and developed.
And developed.
And developed.
Yeah.
So you can't do it in a vacuum.
So, are, are we in agreement that that's what we should be doing? I mean, we should be sending a letter to that effect? I mean, I'm hearing-
Personally, what, what I would request is that you hold off till your next meeting, and I could show you some documents that would really, I think, give a better understanding of the issue. I would delay this till the next meeting and then make a decision. I think there's enough information that's still out there that the supervisors deserve to see before you pass a resolution today. That's what I would ask for, if that's possible.
I don't think we're talking about a resolution. I think what we're talking about is taking a lead from a letter you sent.
Yes.
Wreaking it to where it would be from this Board, saying, "Hell no, we won't go," much the same way you did.
Yes, if you could include that same letter with the bylaws, removal of the bylaws that they rewrote, that would be fine.
I would ask, it would be in concert with the motion that was made, if you could get together with staff and make sure that it, that accurately reflects the sentiment of your letter and what you've heard here today.
Right, if I could see what you're gonna send and make sure, I mean, if you could take our letter, that'd be great.
I mean, I ask that we use your letters as boilerplate.
Sure. I, I think also it might be better just to have another supervisor or represent, I mean, I think we need a new start in communication. I, you know, again, I haven't shown you all these emails, but I just feel like going forward, that might be a better way to go. I, I do, yeah.
Okay, where, additional public comment?
I'm a little confused and a lot concerned that it's even gotten this far. If you read back again that resolution or that motion, essentially is what it's saying, is we'll continue some participation, subject to you going ahead and changing the things. Or, let me back up. Jerry, or Supervisor Hemmings, you hit it on the nail. What degree of participation are we talking about? If we offer them any participation, they're going to claim that we participated. And you know they're out to get ya. They know, you know that they don't play it fair. You know that they're gonna steamroll ya. And you have to know that when they make their decisions, they're gonna say, "Well, the Board of Supervisors was in it. The Board of Supervisors was part of this decision." And they'll take that to court, and you look back and say, "Gosh, I wish we hadn't." I'm suggesting that you make, have a resolution, or you make a motion, or amend that motion, that we are not going to participate, or even just ignore that, and call for a fair, unbiased, brand-new study. In other words, if you need to say that, you know, we don't like it for whatever, how diplomatically you wish to say that, but that we're, we're standing back, we're standing off, we're, we're dropping that, and we're calling for a real study. And I think a couple of good words came from both doctors to be able to use in that. Thank you.
Okay. I think, I, yeah, Doc, Dr. Davis?
Thank you very much. I'm really appreciative that you all are hosting this discussion. I'm Mark Davis. I'm a urologist. I've been here for the last twenty years. I have a bit of different perspective. I still am on the Board of Trustees of the California Medical Association, so I do bring to the discussion a statewide perspective. I have heard over the years of the violations that Sutter has committed on the community it's supposed to serve. I agree with the previous comments that Dr. Duncan has said and Dr. Caldwell. Sutter is a dubious organization that we need to be extremely careful of. I would like to step back just a second. I think, you know, this discussion is being contentious. I think we need to do, really step back. What, what do we need as a community to do? We, as a community, need to band together. We are all on the same team here. Everybody up there on that side of the Board and here. We, we need to, I, I think what should have happened with, from the beginning, is either the Healthcare District or the Board of Supervisors, along with City Council, are the ones that should have initiated this study to find out, what is it that we need for medical care in our community? I think that's where we need to start. I, I think it's a reasonable idea to write this letter in conjunction with Dr. Duncan. He is extremely knowledgeable about what's going on with this and is an expert with this. But, and I think it's reasonable for the Board of Supervisors to write this letter in conjunction with him, but I still think what I would like to see is for the Board of Supervisors, City Council, and the Healthcare District to get together and somehow or another come up with funding on our own to really do a truly unbiased, unassuming study of what we need in this community for health care. I think if we do that, that's gonna be legitimate from the beginning. It's not gonna be a, a study that's funded by any outside people that have any kind of conflict of interest or any economic interests of their own. Sutter Health is, with, with their bylaws changes, they are not now, in my opinion, and I have formed three not-for-profit public corporations for public benefit, they do not meet this criteria anymore. Senator Ellen Corbett has held hearings in the state about Sutter Health's 501(c)(3) status. They're still investigating this. Sutter Health has a lot to lose here. We are .5% of Sutter Health's income, their, their whole corporation. The reason they are fighting us on this is if we, in fact, win this, and hopefully we will win this injunction, they are gonna have to change their modus operandi in every one of their hospitals. They are not gonna be able to continue to break the laws that they are breaking. They're in violation of CMS, Centers for Medicare and Medical Health Studies Services. They're in violation of their rules, they're in violation of Joint Commission rules, and they're in violation of the law. This is as per our letter from our physician that I've been able to obtain from CMA that is a, a super healthcare expert. We have that letter, and if you wanna see that, we'd be glad to give it to you.
Dr. Davis, say.
I would just really, I don't wanna take more of your time, 'cause I think we're all on the same page, but I would hope that what we do get out of this is, I would write this letter, honestly, I doubt that Sutter is gonna meet our recommendations. I would really hope that you all would get together with the Healthcare District and the City Council to try to put together our own unbiased study to see what this community really needs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Yep? Yes?
Hi, I'm Catherine Murray, City Crescent City. I've been watching this part of the meeting online and felt compelled to come down here even though I'd just been for a walk. I, I believe that a letter should be sent. I, I've been on the subcommittee with Martha McClure, Kelly Shalong, and, and I haven't seen you yet, Mike, but there's a big group of us, and we're working very hard, and sometimes people do their due diligence and maybe it doesn't get passed on to another person, so I would encourage you to keep the original vote with the letter with your itemized concerns. And Martha McClure, I met her last night, and she had done an incredible amount of homework on this subject. She had all four of the RFPs printed out, as a matter of fact, looking at them very carefully, so I believe Martha, she knows the issues and she will do what's right for the community, so I believe that she's the best representative that we could have for this study. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Caldwell, I'll allow you one more shot at it, and then, as being part of the physicians' group.
So, I meant a, a generic letter saying, "Well, you would support a real study," but I don't think you should name Supervisor McClure as being on it if they do that, because I tell you, they're gonna twist that around and use it-
I, I think the wording on this thing is, "We cannot participate in a study unless the following conditions are met," I think, and, and-
And then we'll think about it.
Yeah, and I apologize for creating the confusion of saying, "We'd love to participate in the study," because that's not what I meant. I meant I said, "We cannot participate unless the following conditions are met." And according to Dr. Duncan's boilerplate, or the letter, basically the points in his letter.
And again, only if they come back with these, say their meeting, then we'll reevaluate those conditions.
Well, we would at that point, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But not to say, not that-
I will withdraw my name and my participation.
Okay.
Good. Any other public comment? Okay, so Supervisor Finnegan, how's-
Yeah, just to, to put a, try to put a positive spin on this, because we really have been good partners that have worked together, and the goal is the same. The goal is to, to stop the fire-breathing dragon called Sutter, and to guarantee that we have adequate health care, and health care is allowed to grow and flourish in this community. To that end, we need to send a letter, okay? Keeping it positive, let's deal with just that in the letter. The, the second part of that, which is not part of the motion anymore, okay, was to recognize the hard work that Supervisor McClure has done on behalf of the Board, which includes but not limited to engaging the Attorney General and working with the attorneys to try to stop Sutter from what they were doing. She's been on the same page as us. I was not aware that we were participating in a study. I thought we weren't, because you weren't. So that, that's, that's the miscommunication. So let's keep it positive. Let's deal only with a motion that says that we, you know, are not gonna deal with this study until such time as there is a study that is independently blah, 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 you, we've already talked too much about, okay?
Because I wanna say, sometimes when I get mad, then my eyes start to water, because I have been working on health care in this county since we tried to do a physi, the Physicians' Retention Project, because I have recognized the need of what we have to do in this community. I have been an adamant protester against critical access, to the point that I have, you know, made contact with the supervisors in Lake County and found that it's not working there. I have, I have tried to do, turn every stone. I have tried to ask Congressman Huffman that we have to, that we have to write legislation that's going to protect the constriction that's gonna happen in rural health care. I have worked tirelessly on this, and I just am absolutely flabbergasted.
And I'm gonna reiterate what Supervisor Finnegan said. It's on a positive note, and I, I will reiterate, Supervisor McClure, from the very beginning, has been one of the, the advocates to stop the regionalization. She's been at the forefront, she has for, when has this been going on? For about twelve months now. So, I, I kinda think it's unfair that she's taking shots at this point, and she, she is not working to derail the process of the Healthcare District and the Physicians' Group. If anything, she's been a very big advocate to help those groups, as well as the community, with the health care- with the health care situation. So, at this point, unless there's any public comment left on this particular letter, we're going to send to Sutter. I- Supervisor Gillis?
I'd like, I'd like the new motion to be read back, I'm a little confused what this now, what this motion now says, so can we have it, Tony, can you please read the motion?
I apologize, I'm a little confused myself, um, the motion is to send a letter to Sutter.
Chairman, there isn't a new motion on the floor at this point.
No.
So, we would need a new motion.
Did Supervisor-
I request to amend the motion and withdraw my name and participation from this subject matter.
And Supervisor Finnegan's motion was, "We cannot participate in the study unless the following conditions are met", per, per Dr. Duncan's letter as a boilerplate.
Correct, and I would second that.
And I can support that.
And ask that staff collaborate with Dr. Duncan in the writing of that letter.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Okay, we are going to go to, okay, do you want a recess for a minute? Okay, we're going to go to Legislative and Budget Matters, number 25, "Consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters pertinent to the County of Del Norte, authorize the Chair to sign and send appropriate letters with respect to matters pending before the state or federal governments." Sid, are you on item 26 at this point? I am on number 25. Oh, I think we had, do we, yeah, we already voted on it, okay, so we're, we're on 25.
It's too bad they couldn't have stuck around for number 26.
The, in general-
Support of EMS.
Actually, why don't we jump to number 26, actually, that's a, this is a, "Review and approve authorized chair to sign a letter regarding support of SB 191 pediatric trauma care as requested by North Caris Emergency, North Coast Emergency Medical Service, as requested by Supervisor McClure", and Supervisor McClure stepped out for a second, Jay, if you could kind of give us background on it?
Yeah, I'll see if I can step in for on this one, SB 191 authorizes counties to continue to collect funds to support local emergency medical service systems, as well as hospitals and physicians, who provide uncompensated patient care, and obviously that's an extremely important issue on rural North Coast, California. We do not have a pediatric, pediatric trauma center, and SB 199, or 191 would continue to direct funding of North Coast EMS designated emergency departments, approve for pediatrics in Humboldt, Del Norte, Lake Counties, six of seven hospitals located within our 7,000-mile, square-mile region. Obviously, it's an important bill that will allow for funding for some extremely important services to children.
Excellent. So, move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved to second, any public comment on this item?
Okay, I just want to thank Supervisor McClure for bringing this forward from EMS, and I would like to say, when I used to sit on EMS, we had a signing ceremony at Sutter Coast, where it was designated as a pediatric trauma facility, and then I think the, the regulations changed, or something to that effect, to where it was not withheld, or not maintained, something to that effect, but we had, we hung a little sign, it was pretty cool, so I'm glad that it's coming full circle.
Any other comment? Public comment? Seeing no public comment, bring it back, Tony, could you please, or actually, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Item 27, "Review and provide direction regarding AB 468 insurance disaster management preparedness and assistance surcharges requested by county administrative officer."
AB 468 is being introduced by Assemblyman Chesbrough, it would repeal the $150 fee, and in place would put a surcharge on insurance policies, that would be paid by all insureds, and then would go back to fund operations of CAL FIRE, Operation of Emergency Services, and the Military Department. It would also possibly provide local government disaster planning and response funding.
Okay.
Move to approve.
It's been moved, I hear a second? Not so much.
And the reason I'm not going to second it is, I want to see how the bill develops as it goes through the legislature, and see whether CSAC or RCRC wants to weigh in on this.
So we table it out to the next meeting?
I'd like to, I'd like to see what's going to happen with, I mean, what is that surcharge going to be?
Absolutely.
How's it going to, I mean, are we going to end up paying more?
Well, it's another, exactly, it's, it's just another stream to pay money for a service that we're already paying twice for, through our property taxes, plus through our fire fees, so.
Okay, so there's no second on the motion, it dies, and we'll make sure to bring this up at a future meeting, at that point, we may have a first and a second at that point to, to vote on it. Item 28, authorize Chair to sign a letter of support from the Board of Supervisors for AB 244, which is a bill to reestablish the Veterans License Plate, and increase funding to California County Veteran Services Officers, as requested by Office of Veteran Service Office. Move to approve?
Second.
It's been moved to second, any public comment on this item? Public comment, bring it back to the board, a, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving, moving on to item 29, authorize the Chair to sign a letter opposing Bill 52, as requested by Deputy Director Building and Planning. Heidi?
Move to approve.
It's been moved. Heidi, do you want to just give a brief summary of what the bill, bill's doing?
The bill proposes to add additional requirements in the California Environmental Quality Act with regard to consultation with Native American tribes, and I believe that, based on the information that I provided in my letter, there are, is a structure set aside currently in state law that allows for it, and additionally, the county has a participant who sits on its Environmental Review Committee, who represents the interests of the local Native Americans, so I believe that we are already fairly conscientious to bring in the tribes very early on in the process, and this would just be one additional regulation that may not be needed.
Okay, thanks, Heidi. Yeah, I would think, I thought the governor was going to work on reforming sequo, I'd have been layers added to the-
Well, this isn't the governor's bill.
Yeah. Okay, any public comment? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, passes unanimously, we are, any other legislative matters, which was item 25, before we adjourn? Oh, yeah, thank you, thank you, okay, items, and keeping in mind, item 18 was a duplicate, it was already voted on, on April 23rd, so we are, I will entertain a motion to, to approve the budget transfers.
Move to approve 0501, 0503, 0506.
And second?
It's been moved to second, any public comment on budget transfer items? Okay, seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the board, Tony, could you please pull the vote?
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes.
Chair Sullivan?
Yes. Okay, we as of now are, yes, Supervisor Hemmingson?
Well, you know, a lady made a comment a little bit ago about priorities, and said that we were putting the airport as a priority to the airport, and that is absolutely not the case. The, the hospital is very important to this board, and the community, as well as the airport, so I'm not trying to overstate or understate one or the other, but to say that we would rather have the airport than have the hospital is totally-
Erroneous.
Wrong.
Well, and I didn't want to say anything either, Jerry, but, you know, people come and say their piece, but the value of this board, to this community, is we juggle dozens of things at the same time, including infrastructure of 199, the hospital, the airport, the sewer, you know, and on and on and on, we juggle funding programs for kids with other mental health issues, we juggle the sheriff, et cetera, et cetera, I mean, they all, it's a parallel track, it's called health and vibrancy of this community, so sustainability.
And I, I think I would concur with our other supervisors, it's, the hospital is an integral part of this community, that's why the board is involved in the fight, and we do support the Physicians Group, and, and we will continue to do that, because as I mentioned before, it's a David versus Goliath scenario, and we want to make sure the community is better off in the long run, but it's erroneous to put one project over another, and, and that's, that's not the way the board, the boards prioritize stuff, so, okay.
And I have not received a letter to sign on behalf of the counties for our reaction to the May revise, because apparently it's not out yet, so no news is good news until the other shoe drops. Oops.
There's been a, an initial response by Peterson Consulting, and I was looking at that in between some of the conversations, and it appears that there's been a significant focus, as you had mentioned, in regards to the Health and Human Services, as well as the Affordable Care Act, and how the implementation, as well as schools, and so, there's a rush, all, every year, there's a rush to who can get their analysis out first.
Right.
We're going to see five or six of these analyses over the next couple of days, the first one is going to be of really no consequence, and we'll start to see details as they progress, but the issues that you brought up earlier are definitely the ones that they're discussing.
We are adjourned till May 21st with the joint city-county meeting.